I guess we're okay, though.
He, uh, didn't confirm either way. They just put it out.
Oh, okay.
Okay, well, here we go. Okay, this is the opening of the public, of the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. Who do we have? What commissioners do we have?
We'll have, we'll do the roll call for the attendance and for the votes over here. So she'll call your name and you just say aye. And then for the, same with the votes, when somebody seconds it, when you say the vote, then they'll call the names.
Okay.
That way it's recorded since it's not so much visual.
Okay, well, first on the agenda is adoption of the minutes for the meeting of July 14th. Has everybody read the minutes and find any additions or deletions?
I move that we pass the minutes. This is Jim Berg. I move we pass the minutes as distributed.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Be sure to say your name, please.
Yep.
Okay, so, um, I guess we need a roll call?
Well, let's do a roll call first. Commissioner Igary?
Aye. Here. Or here, present. Are we? Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Commissioner Berg?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Hood? Commissioner Marano?
Here.
Commissioner Warman? Chairman Miller?
Here.
So for passing the minutes, Commissioner Igary?
Aye.
Commissioner Berg?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Marano?
Aye.
Chairman Miller?
Aye.
Okay, that's, uh, we adopted the minutes. Uh, let's go to the public hearing. Participant, uh, participants, please state your names, uh, and your address before, um, talking to us. Uh, the first one is Architectural Design Review, Bay Shore Drive, Qusbe. The applicant is resting, requesting consideration of a halo illuminated sign. Would some would like, uh, well, first of all, is there anyone, uh, that has a specific interest? I like the Starbucks coffee, but... Okay, uh, is there?
Too expensive.
Um, I'm gonna read the hearing disclosure statement. The review criteria for an architectural design review is found at seventeen point three four seven of the Qusbe Municipal Code, and it was included in the staff reported notice. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the applicable criteria or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes is applicable to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the decision makers and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal on that issue. We are ready for the first PowerPoint. Um, this is the second time, uh, that this application has been brought before the commission. Last month, all their signage was approved for, uh, non-illuminated signage, except for the drive-through and, um, mini boards for the drive-through on, at, for the Starbucks. The applicant came back and asked for reconsideration of one illuminated sign, but it's not, um, a gas tubing. It's not neon. Uh, it's called halo lighting, and it's kind of, uh, lighting behind the sign. And so they would like the commission to consider that, since it's not the prohibited neon gas tubing signage. Um, and staff reviewed it and, and found it to be, you know, in compliance with the basics of the standards and goals. Um, so it's up to you guys if you want to approve it. Uh, one thing that we want to, to understand is this will probably be the go-to illuminated sign for the entire development, um, because everyone will be under the same standards. Um, so allowing a halo signage would be the only illuminated signage that any build, any, uh, development would be permitted. Uh, all other signage would have to be non-illuminated. But they were concerned about not having that visual appeal from the highway, 'cause it is pretty well removed from the highway, um, to get, give, uh, customers fair notice of approaching businesses. They're, they're not proposing any freestanding, like, menu sign that says all these businesses are in here. So it would be to each business to provide their own signage.
Do we have any examples already in the city of this type of sign? Do you can take a?
Do you guys, well?
Sacway North Bend.
Yeah, Sacway North Bend, um... And when she speaks to that, she could explain a little bit more. Um, I understand you weren't able to download, um, your packet, but I do have?
I've got, I've got the attachment now, 'cause that's what we were doing, is getting me online here.
Okay. Um, so if you need a picture of it, I, I have one here in the packet that I can show you.
Let me see if the attachment brings it up.
So is there, has there been? Oh. Has there been any research done that there wasn't something like this in the nineteen twenties, nineteen forties to meet the heritage?
Yeah, no, no, none of the signs that would be proposed by businesses unless they were, um, wooden signs. They haven't seen any other than wood with metal framing on them.
Okay.
Um, with, in the past, um, company signs, um, like the Starbucks logo, I mean, that is a trademark sign that, um, everybody that has a Starbucks has to have that sign. They can have it made out of different material, which in this case they did. Their previous signs are wood-type wall-mounted, non-illuminated signs for the rest of the building. Um, and that will be the case for most of the businesses. They'll have their trademark logos, um, that there's not a lot of getting around it. It's just what type of material it's on, I guess, will be more of the review for us. And that it be non-illuminated without, or with Christmas lighting, or, uh, maybe not glow lighting from below.
Okay. Any other questions, Debbie? Okay, can, is the applicant? Yes. Would you please state your name and address and come tell us about why you want to do illuminated sign, a halo sign?
Hi, I'm Trina from Art Signs. Um, we are in Qusbe, South Qusbe, and we have been asked to install signs for Starbucks. And, um, Starbucks is really, um, really appreciate having one sign, um, haloed sign. Um, that's just, you know, they just have high standards. And it's a really nice looking sign. When it's lit behind, so during the day, it's just a sign face, and at night, the light shines back. Say we had it in this room, it would shine against the wood, the halo lighting. And nobody's gonna see the LED lights. You just kinda... I think it's a really clean set of art signs. It's a really clean setup, so, neon.
And you understand, you understand why we're in this predicament is 'cause of the heritage?
Yes.
Yes.
And I texted or emailed Debbie already. We have more businesses looking to have haloed signs as well. I mean, we told them they have to go through the review. Um, so they're just gonna wait and see how this evening looks.
Okay, maybe set the standard here.
Well, this is Jim Berg, you know?
Okay.
We could, um, we can, we're ourselves out talking about this heritage thing, but the buildings look contemporary. I mean, this is a contemporary sign. I mean, it's attractive. It's not overstated. Uh, you know, but certainly we, we haven't created a little mini eighteen, nineteen twenties village down there. Nobody's intending for that to be the case, so I, I think it's on.
Oh, thanks. Mr. Berg?
I knew you'd appreciate it.
So, uh, this is Jeff. We were having a very difficult time with the audio on the applicant's description of the sign. So is it safe to say it's similar to a, a box sign backlit, uh, with the fancy frame? Uh? Yes, no?
This is going to be individual letters mounted to the wall on the rock on the stone. This particular sign will be individual letters, um, standing off from the rock. It's not like, it's similar to this photo of the Starbucks, but it will not have a background, will not have a raceway. Each letter will be individually mounted to the building. So the light, the halo will illuminate on the stone.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess that's, um, I guess that's all the questions for you. Is there anyone to speak against this decision? Well, okay, then, let's close the hearing and deliberate. I have no problem at all with this sign.
I don't either.
Great. I'm playing with it.
It's very attractive.
Okay, uh, did you hear that, Commissioner Berg and Commissioner Marano?
Yeah, yes, we do. We're, we're in agreement.
Okay, well, then can we get a motion?
I'll move to Planning Commission, approve the project one eight seven two zero zero zero, zero one two eight, subject to the findings of CBMC Section seventeen two four zero, standard specified in Attachment One of the August eleven twenty twenty Planning Commission Staff Report.
Second.
Jim Berg.
And we have a second? So who did second? Amy, okay. Okay, um, so we have a motion and a second. Um, all those in favor? Well, or do we need to do a roll call? Okay.
Commissioner Igary?
Aye.
Commissioner Berg?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Marano?
Aye.
Chairman Miller?
Aye.
Okay. You want to appeal this one in fifteen days, Debbie, or does that matter? You've already done that.
I'm sorry. There is a fifteen day appeal period from the date the decision's put in writing, which will be today. And we'll upload that to the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving to three B on the agenda, conditional use, um, one zero five six Michigan Avenue. Um, and it's about a tourist habitation. Can you tell us about it, Debbie?
Well, first I will read the hearing disclosure statement. The review criteria for conditional use is found at Qusbe Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point three four seven, and was included in the staff reported notice. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the applicable criteria or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which a person believes is applicable to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the decision makers and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal on the issue. Ready for PowerPoint. The applicant and owner of ten fifty-six Michigan Avenue is requesting approval for a change of use for their single-family dwelling to tourist habitation, vacation rental. Uh, they propose to, um, rent out the structure for a maximum of six people at any one time, and to limit, um, vehicles associated with the property to two vehicles, based on the number of bedrooms, one space per, uh, sleeping quarters is what the requirement is. And the structure is a two-bedroom and a one-bath. The review criteria for this, um, is listed on the second page of the PowerPoint. Um, and there are four review criteria that must be met in order for it to be placed. And upon review of the applicant's supplemental and information available at City Hall, staff concluded that with the requirement of two off-street parking places, um, that the, and with the applicant complying with the business license and transit tax requirements, um, and having a local person as a contact in case there's any complaints regarding the use, so someone can immediately take care of the issue. And, um, that they take out a change of use permit, so Building Code has a chance to review, um, fire and life safety issues, so that, that is taken care of before it's occupied for a tourist habitation. Otherwise, the, um, staff found that it can comply with, um, approval criteria A through D.
Okay. Is the applicant here?
Are they online? The applicant? I think she's on the phone.
Okay.
If you wanna close.
Yeah, there was somebody online earlier.
Is the applicant on the phone?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great. Is there anything you want to add to the staff report? Or any other information you want the commission to know?
I don't think so. I, I've never really done this before, so I don't know what you're looking for, but I would certainly be happy to answer any questions.
I guess there's no questions. It seems pretty straightforward.
Absolutely.
Um, is there anyone to speak against this, this tourist habit, habitation? Well, hearing done, then I think we will close the, uh, close it and deliberate. Okay, um, we've been here before with these. It seems, as long as it's, there's somebody to respond to it if there's trouble.
I like the four conditions that we've got, and I think we'll see more and more of these. As long as they comply with those four conditions, it should be fine.
Okay. Anything from you? Jim, Jeff?
Well, I, I've been to the property, and I, I think that it's just fine for this kind of use. There is ample parking there. There's a kind of an extra wide right away there. It looks like people put their foot, the, the street didn't get quite put down the middle, and it leaves quite a bit of space between the, the property and the curb. So there's, and there is a driveway that goes back to a garage. There's, I think there's plenty of space for parking.
Okay, good to know. Well, do we entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion. I move that we approve land use application one eight seven two zero 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 zero, I think, four six, and, uh, the change of use to, uh, tourist habitation.
With the four conditions?
With, with the conditions that were included.
Second the motion.
I don't, I don't think you got in on time, Jeff.
Okay, that's fine.
All right.
I'm good.
You have a motion and a second?
This is so hard.
Protect church.
All right. Roll call it is.
All right, Commissioner Igary?
Aye.
Commissioner Berg?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Marano?
Aye.
Chairman Miller?
Aye.
All righty, there is a fifteen day appeal period from the date the decision's put in writing, which is today. And, um, we can talk with you tomorrow if you'd like about the permit process and go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, moving on our agenda to three C, conditional use, use and a site plan for a veterinary clinic.
All righty, the review criteria for a conditional use and site plan review is found at Qusbe Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point three four seven, and seventeen point three six five, which was included in the notice and report. The staff, or testimony and evidence must be directed towards the applicable criteria or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which a person believes is applicable to the decision. Failure to raise an issue with sufficient detail to afford the decision makers and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal on that issue. Um, the applicant wishes to establish a veterinary clinic for large and small animals, and to provide some kenneling or boarding of animals, um, as it relates to medical procedures. Um, they propose to do an interior remodel of the sick, existing structure, but do not propose to do any increase to the foot plant, footprint of the building. They'll be adding landscaping and outside pet walk and run area, and parking and drainage improvements. Uh, the proposed use is listed as a conditionally permitted use in the commercial zone, and so that is what brings us to this application. Um, part one of the application is the conditional use, um, portion, which again, items A through D are what are the approval criteria that they need to satisfy. And staff found that with a, a, a number of conditions, um, and we didn't list them individually, uh, per application, but we listed all the conditions at the end for a combined review. Uh, but we did find that with listed conditions, that the approval criteria are satisfied for the conditional use application. Part two of it, um, is the site plan review, and there are approval criterias A through I that need to be addressed, um, with relationship to how, um, how the build, how the property's developed. And again, um, staff found that with a, a nice list of conditions, um, that all of the review criteria can be satisfied. Um, and those conditions of approval, um, are listed in the staff report, um, that was given to the Planning Commission, and it, I believe it is twenty-nine conditions of approval. And those twenty-nine, um, address planning, engineering, building code, and fire code issues. And they are separated by things that have to be done before a building permit can be issued, um, before a site development permit can be issued. Then there are some that are prior to final that they need to comply with. And then general conditions of approval, such as maintaining the landscaping in good order at all times, uh, keep maintaining compliance with the noise ordinance, um, and all of those generic conditions for larger developments. But we can discuss any of those individually if you'd like.
Is this the building that's on the right-hand side as you're coming into Qusbe?
Yes, it's the King's Table building.
Yeah, 'cause it's been empty for years, ever since they built it.
When the King's Table closed, it was purchased by someone locally here who did all of those, uh, building improvements, um, that was never able to establish the ambulance billing service. And I think they were planning on putting a radio station in there as well.
Oh.
And it just never transpired.
Okay.
Um, the applicant has been to us once or twice before, but, um, their previous land use applications and their building permits expired, so they're being required to go back through the process.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Yes.
All right. Tell us about your veterinary clinic.
Name and address, yeah. Karen Gersted, uh, with Morgan Veterinary Clinic. We're located at two thirty Market Street in Qusbe. Is there anything you want to add to the staff? Well, I appreciate Mr. Miller's comment earlier. Uh, this is the second time. Uh, the first plan was done, um, very nicely, um, but over one doctor's capability in servicing that debt. It was a Battlestar Deluxe veterinary clinic. Uh, our plans on this one originally is, has been drastically changed, the floor, the inside floor plan, and the parking lot as well. But, uh, we are building the center of the building. Our existing building is like some of the other buildings in town down Qusbe. Uh, there is, I can literally put my hand underneath one door jamb in back of the building where our building is tipping backwards, um, which has its advantages when you're mopping it all. So we need to move. We, and we're too small for us. Um, we, we've been here, um, the building has been a veterinary clinic since prior to nineteen sixty-three, when we were AHA certified. And Dr. Carl Gersted, my husband, has been at this facility since nineteen nine. Um, we're building the center of this with our necessary exam rooms, lobby, surgery suite, treatment area, uh, small kennel area, and recovery rooms. I don't know how veterinary is going to, uh, develop. I have plans of a dental suite on one end if it's necessary, and then physical therapy. We do laser therapy and physical therapy already. We don't have room work. If that expands, then I can go out the other side, to the north side, and expand that. So we need to get over there, and we need to get rolling. And, uh, 'cause otherwise we're gonna sink into the abyss.
I have, I have a question, uh, Jim Berg. Uh, if I recall correctly from the last time this was approached, you were gonna be treating large animals, like, you know, cows and horses, I guess. Uh, is that still part of the plan, or are we, uh, because it seemed to me I remembered some of that discussion.
Yes, the plan is, uh, we see all, um, we see fish, even. Um, we currently, I know we're not supposed to, but currently we have horses pulled into the, um, side street there, and Dr. Carl's, you know, down there on the lawn, which is not appropriate for where we are. I know that. Um, so yes, we would be seeing large animal. The flooring over there is a plywood floor. There's no, without doing a lot of structural integrity, planning, and cement, uh, we can't have a vehicle on that floor or any large animals on the floor. Um, we have long-term phase plan of a portico-type thing, uh, that we can, uh, close off, or at least panel off if there's an animal. But most of our large animal work is done in the field, on the farm, uh, with the mobile chair.
Any other questions?
It's about time something happened there. No, I, I think it's terrific to get that building into active use. It's been, it's been, you know, there. We've all seen it for a long time, and, uh, to have it be, it's for a bunch of people to take their pets and stuff, it's great.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone to speak against this veterinary clinic? Okay, I guess we will close the hearing and deliberate. Anybody have any thoughts?
Yeah, just a comment. I, there's twenty-nine conditions here. Is the applicant aware of these conditions and what they are requiring? Is the applicant aware of these conditions and what they are requiring of them?
They're asking if you're aware of the 29 conditions of approval.
I have been notified.
Pardon?
Have I been notified? I haven't been notified, I don't know what you mean.
The staff, the report that was sent with your invitation, the link. Do you want to look at it?
While Karen's looking at the conditions, my only concern with this is the landscaping, as you might have guessed. This is front row center of Coos Bay. This, after you drive by the burned-out lawn at the Red Lion and the knee-high grass, this is the next thing you see. And it's important to me, and I think a site plan, this is the time to try to fix these things. And look at the landscape plan, it's very detailed, it's very nice, but I don't think that it is applicable to that site. And it's not that it needs to be more expensive or you need more plants, you probably need less plants, but I would like to see this come back again with a better understanding of how you can enhance that building. Some well-placed trees and some evergreen foundation plants would make that front look so much nicer. And so I, you know, I'm not here to redesign the landscape, but I think that needs some attention. Also, there's some other things, it says irrigation. Well, you know, where's the RP go? Is it for shrubs and lawn, or is it just for the lawn? How many gallons per minute? There's some, some real questions there that could be answered. And again, I do not want to belabor this project at all. I think it's a, I think these are simple things, but it could be much nicer and probably with a lot less, for one thing, a lot less plants. It's not an English garden, thyme and vinka minor really don't belong here. And the reason I say that is because I would rather see a couple trees and a couple evergreen shrubs there and have it be able to be maintained, as opposed to a lot of smaller things and have it grow up in grass and then you can't, you can't treat it physically or chemically. So I guess I would ask that you would look at some of the landscapes in town that are pretty successful. Taco Bell is a great example, Oregon Pacific, Uncoa. And take a look at the character that happens there. There's, there's trees that accent the tall, the tallness of the building. There's, there's, you know, you can't go wrong with evergreen shrubs. And there's, and you've got enough here in your palette to choose from. But I would really like to see that, since it is in the first step, it's our front door to the city as you come into town. And I'd like to see that kind of mold over and maybe talk to a, talk to a designer, don't want to have you spend a bunch of money. But I think you could do something very nice, nicer than propping what you've got here. There's, there's just, I'm just, that front is just not as nice as it could be. So that's my only comment, for what it's worth.
Chair Miller, this is Carolyn speaking. Perhaps the commission would be interested in, with your motion, to take action on this to include a provision that the landscape plans be revised to the satisfaction of the community development director. And that would get prior to issuance of the building permit, that would give them some time, and then it would also mean they wouldn't need to come back to you. What would you think about that idea?
Well, I think that would be fine. I, I don't want to hold this, this project up, and I don't want it to be more expensive. But I would like to see a better, I would like to see a better landscape design, at least in the front, that's our front door. Now, what happens in the back is probably not so important. And there's a lot of expense in here that I, that I, I don't see why you would do. If you're going to put your, if you're going to put your money up front, put it up front where it shows. So yeah, if it were, if it were rehashed a little bit and, and brought back to the city, yeah, I think, I think that would be a good compromise.
Okay, that way they can keep going, but I've gotten some direction from, from the commission on, on the design a little bit. And would you be available if staff had any questions for advice on when the new plan comes in, to maybe take a look at it?
Sure, love to, love to.
Okay. Okay, does that work for the applicant?
No, yes, it certainly works for us. I reached out to a planner, a design, a landscape designer, and got, received their guidance on which plants to select and some of those things. I was really worried, the low-level plants for the front of the building for traffic visibility. And, and so I picked a lot, I liked a lot of trees, so I had to put a lot of the bigger trees in the back. And, and that'll be for shading purposes as well. So I welcome any advice.
Okay. Well, I think all we would need to do is that be part of your motion. And I think Debbie, maybe we could just add a very minor condition saying that part of the issuance of the building permit, we'd get this cleared up after the director took a look at the plans, the revised plans.
Okay, is that being said? Do we have a motion?
Well, gosh, I'll make another motion, this is Jim Berg. I don't usually do this, but I'm kind of feeling perky tonight. I would like to approve number 18720000044 with the conditions that are attached here and including the final tweaking of the landscaping issue to make this show places it should be. So, so there.
I'll second it.
Okay, well, we have a motion and a second. I guess let's do what we'll call.
Commissioner Medury.
Hi.
Commissioner Berg.
Hi.
Commissioner Davis.
Hi.
Commissioner Marano.
Hi.
Chairman Miller.
Hi.
There is a 15-day appeal period from the date the decision's put in writing, and for this one, that will be tomorrow, so that I can make the changes. But Karen, I can talk, I will send this out to you tomorrow, and then we can discuss.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think it's wonderful you're getting going on this. We all, we need more veterinaries, that's for sure.
Well, I tell you, the last three months, I agree.
Okay, next on the agenda, 3B is a comprehensive plan amendment. Can you tell us about that, Debbie?
No, I cannot.
Oh, Carolyn.
Mrs. Jim Osley.
Oh, Jim.
And I'll, I'll start this. This is the transportation system plan, which requires some changes to the development code, as well as being adopted into the comprehensive plan. So what we're going to do is kind of give you a three-person staff report. I'll start off with a summary. Then we have Angela Rogie, our traffic engineer and consultant, who was instrumental in putting this project together for us, gives a briefing on the whole of what a TSP is. And then Carolyn will jump in and talk about the comprehensive plan and the development code requirements and changes. And then I'll come back and talk to you briefly, give you a 30,000-foot view of projects that are being posed. And then we'll turn it back over to you for questions and process. So Angela's operating the slides for us. And first part is the staff report. So back in July, you might recall, the city council held and continued a public hearing on the TSB, or Transportation System Plan, to the August 18th, 2020 meeting. And the Planning Commission is asked to review and provide the council with their recommendation on this project. The City of Coos Bay is required by Oregon statutes and administrative rules to enact a comprehensive plan in land use regulations that conform with statewide planning goals and guidelines, and coordinate with other affected units of government. Transportation planning is part of the state's requirements, and the 2020 Coos Bay Transportation System Plan details projects and policies that address transportation facilities and the community's transportation-related goals. The document serves as a vision for the community by providing a 20-year list of improvement projects and a plan for implementing those projects. The 2020 TSP update and related Coos Bay Municipal Code amendments have been completed with Oregon Department of Transportation funding and technical assistance from ODOT, David Evans &amp; Associates, and Angelo Planning Group. The updated TSP reflects consensus among the cities of Coos Bay and North Bend, as well as Coos County and ODOT on Coos Bay's transportation needs and priority projects. Projects comply with the Coos Bay Municipal Chapter, or Code, Chapter 17.215, Plan Amendments and Zone Changes, the Coos Bay Comprehensive Plan, the Oregon Transportation Plan, and the Oregon Highway Plan. TSP updates, update process has been going on since 2018, and has involved regular public advisory committee meetings and public open houses. Citizen input informed policy direction in needed projects eligible for state and federal funding upon TSP adoption. The draft TSP capital projects are identified as either Tier One and Tier Two. Tier One projects could be constructed with funding anticipated through the year 2040. Tier Two projects are needed but unfunded. Among other options, future funding can be achieved by the development community with the construction of new projects and/or the city as needs arise and funding is available or a combination thereof. One new Tier One project not included in the draft is up for your consideration, and future decision on this will be forthcoming, as the intersection of Empire Boulevard and Newmark Avenue may need to be redeveloped. And I'll give you more information on that later in this report. So next, we'll have Angela Rogie.
There we go. Hello, everyone. I'm Angela Rogie with David Evans &amp; Associates, and I was the consultant project manager for the Coos Bay and North Bend TSP update. Jim already covered quite a bit of, you know, the requirements of kind of why we have a TSP and its state mandate. So I will kind of speak to, you know, what value it adds to your community. A TSP is a blueprint for your transportation system. The process evaluates, you know, what's on the ground now and where there might be deficiencies in connectivity or access or operations, and seeks to find solutions or potential projects and set a plan to how to, to implement those projects over the next 20 years. The project list that Jim mentioned, there's Tier One and Tier Two, and that's our, you know, our best foot forward for what we think is attainable in the next 20 years. That doesn't mean that we can't, and the city can't, implement different projects. It's understood that over the next 20 years, things could change. Funding sources could either dry up, or new funding sources could become available. And what's critical about the TSP is that it shows those potential funding sources that the community has thought about what they need, and, and they have a plan to fall back on should funding become available for potential projects. So it plots a course for your community, it, it reflects goals and objectives that were developed as part of this project, and it helps the community work towards those goals. It's, it's a vision that the community will hope to achieve over the next 20 years. The, as Jim mentioned, the project team included representatives from the consultant team, Oregon Department of Transportation in both cities, as well as our advisory committee that had representatives from both communities, as well as the tribal community and residents in Coos Bay and North Bend. The project started in June of 2018 and followed this process to review, you know, existing plans and policies to ensure that as we develop this plan, it's consistent with the work that's done in the past. We, after documenting the existing conditions and anticipated future deficiencies, the project team worked to develop alternatives to address those deficiencies. Throughout that process, we met with the public advisory committee and also held public open houses. One thing that we did hear loud and clear from the onset is that maintenance and protecting the, and enhancing the existing system is key. It's, it's important to fix the potholes, to make sure that your roads are, that you have already are operating to their optimum ability before, you know, building something new. And so that was something that we heard from the very beginning, from project kickoff and at every meeting thereafter. And so now we're at, at the point where we come to you with a plan and hopefully a, an emotion to approve and recommendation to city council. But as we move forward through this, we'll have Carolyn go over the code and policy pieces, and Jim will review the project list. And if there are any questions for the team, we can, we can work to address those. So as I mentioned, the projects that were developed through identifying existing deficiencies from looking at various plans that have already been done in the community, looking at them through a lens of our goals and objectives, and making sure that none of the projects we proposed were going to hit a fatal flaw, and such as, you know, maybe it would require too much right-of-way, or it was an environmentally sensitive area. And so our preferred alternatives kind of went through the gauntlet to make sure that the projects we proposed didn't have any critical errors in them. As Jim mentioned, we have Tier One, which we consider financially constrained, and Tier Two, which are needed, but, you know, right now, we don't have an identified funding source to be able to build them. But they have been recognized as important to the community and something that residents and of Coos Bay would like to see documented as a need. As I mentioned, the city's not required to implement any of these projects that are identified in the projects list. First, we recognize priorities may change, but this helps kind of set the stage and, and set kind of a plan for moving forward. So with that, do we want to, Jim, would you like to go over the project list, or do we want to have Carolyn go over the code first?
Might be better if I just do the project list and then have Carolyn jump in.
Great.
All right. So looking at the Tier One projects, those are the projects that we can, we see that it's likely we can fund them over the next 20 years. And first out the gate is what's labeled as ID number 41. That is pavement maintenance, maintenance. So out of the gate, the recommendation and what we heard over and over from the public was, take care of what you've got. Let's don't go building new assets, let's take care of what we've got. So this plan makes that suggestion and allocates most of the resources for the next 20 years into taking care of what we've got. Now, the additional projects in the Tier One are primarily pedestrian-related improvements and bicycle improvements, something that we don't necessarily have a whole lot of, and so fill in some gaps. One other Tier One project you see there at the bottom that says new, that's the Empire Boulevard, Newmark Avenue. That's the Empire Boulevard-Newmark Avenue intersection. We've learned that with, it won't take much new commercial development in that vicinity that might trigger the need for some sort of improvements to that intersection, like maybe a traffic signal or something else. But we found initially that a traffic signal probably can't function there really well, and so one possibility might be around about it's a safe and maybe cost-efficient solution, but that hasn't been.
Excuse me, Jim, are we talking about the wild?
No, it's Empire and Newmark.
Oh, Hollering Place?
Yes. Yeah, so the city council will be evaluating, I'm sorry?
It's down closer to Empire than.
That's correct. Yeah, they're by Hollering Place.
Where that.
Where you make the sharp turn.
Yeah.
Without having to stop.
The bootleg goes around.
That's right.
Okay.
A roundabout, motorola, going to the beach?
There's ways to design it.
Wow, okay.
But that's yet to be seen. So, moving next to Tier 2 projects. These are projects that are not necessarily feasible as far as funding's concerned, but if dollars become available or new development happens, it may trigger some of these projects. And again, these are primarily pedestrian and bike improvements, and there's some striping of road diet, continuing the road diet, striping on Ocean Boulevard, completing that, and perhaps considering a road diet through Empire along Newmark. Moving to the next slide. Again, continuation of projects that, in this case, are more intersection safety-type improvements, and again, more pedestrian improvements, as well as some street upgrades. Next on the list, these are projects that aren't just the City of Coos Bay's, or they may not be the City of Coos Bay's responsibility at all. These have to do with improvements for rail, the rail, and they're mostly pedestrian rail improvements. There's some bicycle improvements, as well as some transit improvements. Can you propose? And finally, continuation and the end of the, I'm sorry, it isn't the end, but it's just more transit and rail crossing improvements. And then we have one more.
There you go.
And these are some of the other things that we may not think about on a day-to-day basis, but we need to, as local government, thinking about freight mobility and what kind of things are out there that are impediments to getting freight up and down the Highway 101 corridor, or maybe within our community. So those are identified there, some things that the port might do for maritime transportation improvements, and then some things we'd like to see with air transportation improvements. And that's all I have. That's the list. There's lots of projects, and I'll be happy to answer any questions on details. We can do that later or now. And then next up will be Carolyn.
Okay, very good. That's a lot of, lot of projects.
We supposed to approve or disapprove of that, something that you suggest?
I don't think we're to that stage yet, right, Jim?
Oh, not, not yet. Later, after, well, after Carolyn's done, then turn it back over to you for the public hearing. You can open up for the public hearing.
Okay.
I don't know that you'll hear much.
Okay.
And then make your, if you have any recommendations, that's fine, but yeah, make a recommendation to the council is what we're asking you to do regarding the adoption of the TSP and the changes that Carolyn's going to be talking about.
I have a quick question, Jim.
Sure.
What, in terms of the airport and the air transportation, so you have some idea to my heart, what can the city do to make something better there?
Yeah, there's probably not a lot the city can do, other than we may be able to pitch some support to, to projects that are being proposed. I know in the past, there's been a request for, and perhaps funds contributed to enticements for air transit service.
Yeah. I mean, we got a nice airport, and everything seems to be pretty up to snuff there. It just, you know, I just, I mean, is it, is there political pressure that we can bring to bear? I mean, you know, what, how can we drive, just get on a plane and go to Portland again like we always used to? I just kind of off the top of my head sort of thought, but.
I'm sorry, Jim, but I couldn't hear. If you're asking me a question, I couldn't understand.
Oh, I was just kind of making a comment that, you know, it would be often nice to be able to fly to Portland like we always used to, two or three times a day, and I just wonder if it's, is there political pressure that can be brought to bear, or, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, besides just paying the airlines to come and do it, because usually when they do come, they're full when they leave, I mean, my experience. So I just wonder how we can kind of, how the city can, you know, help to drive that a little bit.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that the city can drive anything in this. Again, these are, this is a partnership with partner agencies, and I think we're kind of at the mercy of the economics for the airlines.
I meant drive it in the nicest possible way, of course. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So now we have Carolyn?
Yeah, I'm going to weigh in now a little bit. You know, all this work that you're looking at is a piece of what we have to fulfill as part of our, our land use requirements in Oregon. This Transportation System Plan is really the, the transportation piece of your comprehensive plan. I think that's the most simple way to say it. It's, you know, once you've cut through everything, this document is what we have to look at when we look to make decisions on development down the road. And that's what land use documents do, so this will certainly fill the bill. To implement this document, there are some pieces and parts of the municipal code that need to be amended, and the list in front of you, I'm going to go through briefly. As you know, we have different zoning districts in the city, commercial, residential, waterfront, Hollering Place, and each of those districts have different requirements about pedestrian access, easement dedication for right-of-way, and things like that. And really reference those, just new language that needs to be added to our municipal code so that we will fully implement the TSP the way it's supposed to be done. The, the last five on this list are specific to different functions that we need to address that are identified in the TSP. One of them is the joint use of parking facilities, that's really referenced in the first one. The second one is, talks about ride-share parking, pedestrian lighting, bike parking, angled parking standards. All of that is added as new standards for parking design that is currently in our development code. The third one is referencing a requirement for pedestrian access to sidewalks, new transit stops, building orientation, and entry for non-residential projects. The bike-ped access is, is important while we can't necessarily, while we don't necessarily have the funds right now to anticipate doing some of those improvements that Jim listed in the Tier 2, we can require that when new development comes in, they, they kind of pony up to make those features much more accessible to the public. There, on number four, there's an addition, identifying some requirements for transit facilities in our supplemental development standards. And finally, there is some good catch-all language at the very end, requiring that there be standardization of language between our municipal code related to development, which is the development code, and also our engineering standards, as well as the TSP. Right now, there's a few kind of stray hairs that don't all line up, and a part of what our work was doing here was to fix that. So we have consistency with all of our documents. So that's what I have. It's kind of a nutshell version. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So was this list generated from the last meeting in July? Is that where this list of things came from, all these?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
And the council will be seeing this same list, along with this PowerPoint and the TSP, a week from tonight in their meeting. So, once we get your recommendations and you take action on this, we will be, I'll be putting a staff report together for them to look at next week, and it will actually be an ordinance that would adopt the TSP and make all these amendments to the code, the development code. So we're recommending that you, as a body, suggest that the council go ahead and adopt this TSP, and then they would do that by ordinance, and our municipal code would be amended accordingly.
Well, it seems like some are kind of a wish list. I mean, just briefly, I saw widening the Ismasloo Bridge. How are you going to widen it? The bridge is built in 1920, it's about to fall down. Is this, is this, are these things going to happen, or is there more of a priority? I'm a little bit lost. It's a very big list.
Yes, so they're not stated in any sort of priority, other than we heard from the public that repairs is very important to them. So these are, most of those, like that widening of the bridge, that's, yeah, that's if money comes, that's the Tier 2 projects that aren't funded. But there's some other things that can be done along the bridge to improve pedestrian safety or bike safety. So, okay.
So, our goal here tonight is to?
Make the recommendation to the city council?
Okay. Okay, we need to make a recommendation to the city council that we, we're not necessarily approving all these things, we're just approving that they've been submitted, correct?
No, there is. Yes, and we actually included a motion in the staff report that you can, you can use if that's, if that's your wish to recommend council approval.
But before you do so, we need to make sure that we open and close the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay, here, yeah, here's a recommendation. Okay, so, okay, Jim, so you're saying then, once this is recommended, that it closes this, there's no more testimony or no more new ideas?
That's right.
Okay, so, so what you've got on the board is what we've?
Oh, yeah, well, what's, and maybe I'm misunderstanding your question. I mean, you can, you can make recommendations, if you wish, that you would like the council to consider, but understand that these projects, this isn't, everything on that list is not the limit, there can be more, and we can do less than what's on the list. We can do other projects that we're not even thinking of right now, can be added to this list, and doesn't have to be on the list to do. In other words, if there's a transportation need or issue that comes up, we're not anticipating right now, it does not necessarily have to be in the TSP.
This is a guidance document, not a real.
Okay.
Recommending updates.
That makes a difference.
I think I'm understanding it. Does the rest of the commission understand what we're doing?
Recommending updates.
Okay, yeah, it's a, it's an update to the code. Okay, well, there's a recommendation here. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Jeff, or Rex, you need to do the public, or the public hearing hasn't been.
Oh, all right, okay, I'm sorry. Is there anyone in the public that would like to state yes or no to this, this recommendation? Hearing none. I guess we're ready for a motion.
Moving closer to the public hearing.
Oh, okay, okay. Close the public hearing, all right. Okay, commissioners, I'm now getting a handle on what we're doing here, so I hope everybody owns is good with this.
Rex, you're, you're doing great. Don't, don't worry about it, you're doing great.
Thanks, Jeff.
We've been there.
He's glad that you were there.
Yeah, yeah, he's hiding behind a screen somewhere. Well, okay, yeah, I, I have not read all the, the things they want to do, but there's, there's nothing, there's nothing detrimental about it. I mean, if you want to do more transportation and bicycles and water access, you bet, I'm all for that.
Especially the pedestrian, like the, the train, you know, have pedestrian trains going.
Yeah.
That'd be awesome.
Yeah, it would, it would.
So Rex, I'd like to make a motion here that, that is actually written as item 3 in Actions Requested. I move to recommend city council approve project, I'm not going to read it all, of 2020 Transportation System Plan.
One second, Ben.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Do we have a motion? Any second. I guess we need a roll call.
Commissioner, you ready?
Aye.
Commissioner Berg?
Aye.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Merino?
Aye.
Chairman Miller?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Angela.
Thanks, Jim.
A lot of work.
Thank you, Angela. Thank you, guys. We'll talk tomorrow, thank you.
Okay. Item number four, administrative. Anything from you, Debbie? Is it exciting month, next month?
I believe we have some, may have some more proposals made for next month, Carolyn?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Do you have any applications for next month?
We're working on that, and we'll be getting back to you.
I don't have anything major, there might be one along the lines of a conditional use from that.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner comments? Jeff?
Yes.
Any comments?
Tonya had sent a comment about the next meetings at the council chambers. Can someone address that issue? I did have a chance to talk to Joe Benetti, and he said that there's possibility that there's going to be partitions on the council, on the podium, to allow us all back at the next meeting.
Yes, this is Jim speaking. We are in the process of getting partitions constructed for the dais. I think commission members can still elect to participate remotely, but if you want to come in person, you'll have more social distancing.
Okay, thanks, Jim, appreciate it.
Mr. Berg, anything?
Well, I don't know, you know, I, this is going to be kind of fun, doing it like this. I'm just, I gotta keep Jeff where they're six feet away from me, of course, all the time. But, other than.
But other than that, it's, you know, I know it's what we have to do in these difficult times, but it, I would certainly, obviously, I miss you guys as, you know, our personal contact.
All right.
I have no comment.
Bill?
Yep.
Okay, and I'm good. So staff comments?
No, got a lot going on, we'll see what stands out on the agenda.
Okay, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
All right, I guess we're going to adjourn.
All right, see you next time.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Yeah.
Jim, do you want to have another copy?
Yeah.
Can I have that one?